There we go. All right, call the order. All right, to a pledge of allegiance.
Is that me? Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation of God, in whose physical liberty and justice are.
All right, so I would entertain a motion.
Then you can do your offers.
Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me.
That's okay. Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman. Absent. Secretary Ranzor.
Here.
Trustee Brady. Here. Trustee Lady. Here. Trustee Derek.
Here.
And Trustee Dull. Here.
Now could we have a consideration of a motion? Point, he is President Pro Tem, who will be commuted at the whole meeting. Eighteen meetings, July seventeenth.
Some of them.
I need to thank that guy.
Thank you.
Thank you for my life, thank you.
Trustee Brady. Yes. Trustee Lady. Yes. Trustee Derek.
Yes.
Secretary Ranzor.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Dollar.
Yes.
And Vice President Everard.
I understand. All right. First order of business here. Heather, would you mind raising your right hand after me? What did we say, make it more official? You raise your right hand. I Heather Brady.
I Heather Brady.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of trustee as a member of the Board of Trustees.
As trustee as a member of the Board of Trustees.
The McHenry County Conservation District.
Of the McHenry County Conservation District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Illinois compiled statutes.
Illinois compiled statutes.
Any applicable rules and policies.
Any applicable rules and policies.
Of the county of McHenry.
Of the county of McHenry.
And the policies and bylaws.
And the policies and bylaws.
Governing Henry County Conservation District.
Governing the McHenry County Conservation District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I thought you were gonna redid all that once. That's a true test. All right, um. Public comments, how many public comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Thanks Amelia. Marketing and education. Evelyn, you have a presentation for us?
Of course we do. So I just want to thank all of you first of all for giving us a chance to share our work tonight. Um, can you jump to the next slide? So I want to start by giving you kind of a little background on the two documents that were in your board packet. So uh, we'll mostly be talking about the fiscal year twenty twenty five annual report. Um, but and I wanted to start though by talking about the marketing and education plan um for fiscal year twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. Um, so. It is standard for us to bring to the board a marketing plan every four or so years. Um, the previous plan expired in December of twenty twenty four. Um, so we saw an opportunity not only to create a new marketing plan, but also to create a parallel education plan. Um, so that's what we're presenting to you tonight. Um, this marks the district's first formal education plan and the first integrated division-wide marketing and education plan. Uh, we designed the plan to align with the current strategic plan, and it was developed with the upcoming comprehensive conservation plan in mind. Um, so that comprehensive conservation plan obviously is scheduled to start um fiscal year twenty twenty eight, at which point this marketing plan will be completed, um, and we will design a new plan in line with that larger um goal. So to put it simply, this plan is a bridge to help us position the division um to be ready and well-prepared to support and advance the goals of that comprehensive conservation plan. Next slide please. So um, this plan has three main goal areas um to having to do with the departments, obviously. So there's a marketing area, an education area, and then of course customer service, which both departments take part in. Um, so that's where we overlap. And then under each of these umbrellas are fifteen total goal areas, which you see here, I'm not gonna read them all for time's sake. Um, and under there are sixty-five different goals, and then of course even more tactics to achieve those goals. Um, so the team has put in a lot of hard work uh developing these plans over the last couple of months. And we're really proud of them and even more excited to begin the work to achieve them. Uh, I want to give a shout out to Heather and Maddie, who are gonna come up here and talk in a couple of minutes. Uh, when we started drafting these plans, Heather had been here for two months, um, and Maddie had been here for one week. So uh, both of them just jumped right in, uh, saw the vision, and I'm just really excited about the leadership that we have on this team. So next slide. So um, in switching gears to that annual report, the other document um in in your board packet, uh, I would be remiss if I did not mention the changes that happened in the division over the last year um in fiscal year twenty twenty five. Uh, June, we saw the retirement of Director of Marketing and Education Wendy Coomer. Um, and then I was elevated to the position in October. Uh, later that month, Education Services Manager retired from the field, and we brought in Heather in January. The marketing manager role that I had vacated was filled in February by Maddie. Um, and then the final piece of the puzzle was assembled when we hired um our new coordinator at the start of this fiscal year. Um, so. We have all this to say, we have been um shorthanded as a division for ten of twelve months. Um, and eight and a half of those months, the division was missing somebody in a key leadership role. So um, I just want to take a minute to acknowledge all of the work of the members of the marketing and education team, both past and present. Uh, they demonstrated a great amount of teamwork and resourcefulness and resiliency this year, all while maintaining uh the high standards for customer service, education, and outreach and engagement. Slide please. Um, and then one of the major uh division undertakings this year uh being that we are the most public-facing and customer-service-focused uh division at the district was educating residents about the proposition to increase the limiting rate. Um, so this involved efforts from every staff member on both teams, uh outreach efforts, tabling opportunities, responding to public inquiries, managing media relations, developing communications materials. Um, and then our team, just everybody stepped up in a really huge way um to make sure that residents were informed when they were making their vote in November. Got it, next slide. I'm gonna pass it over to Maddie, so she can tell you a little bit more specifically about what the marketing department is up to.
Skilin. I'm hello, I've seen your faces before, but I'm Maddie DuBauer, Marketing Manager. Uh, and next slide. Make sure there is one, our Marketing and Design Coordinator, and we also have a part-time Summer Marketing Chair. Next slide. Um, I want to start by stating our purpose as the marketing team here at the district, so that is to promote the district's mission, foster positive public image, encourage appreciation for our local local natural resources, and generate awareness for programs and events, as well as educate on environmental concerns and recreational opportunities. Marketing team has numerous responsibilities, but today I just want to highlight kind of the improvements that have happened this past year, and I'll start with landscapes. So landscapes is our quarterly magazine publication. Um, and with rising printing and mailing costs, we adjusted our mailing list to county residents for this past summer issue. Um, and what this allows us to do is grow our county subscriber base by pushing towards digital options like our email newsletter um and the digital version of landscapes online. This allows us to also be more environmentally friendly and while still being effective for our county residents. Marketing team also designs and prints all of our brochures and site maps. Um, so this past year, the team redesigned our Discover Your District brochure. Um, understanding that brochure says it's an entry point piece, uh, we created a more concise version of it. So this delivers messaging more effectively for people reading it. Um, this has also led to a significant price reduction per brochure. And the biggest thing this allows us to to do is expand our reach of this brochure and provide it to more of our partner businesses and get it into the hands of more organizations, agencies around the county, and then therefore get them in the hands of to more site users and potential site users. For social media, I want to highlight that this year we saw an increase in followers in both Facebook by eleven percent and Instagram by twelve percent. This brings us to uh just about twenty-three thousand combined followers at the end of this past fiscal year, and we surpassed that since then. Um, and then in the pictures on the bottom are just some of our top posts from Facebook and Instagram combined.
Hey, I saw in the in the report. One million six hundred and twenty-four thousand impressions on Facebook.
Yeah.
Can you? How does that work?
Sure, so an impression is pretty much anytime it pops up on a screen, so the amount of times it's popped up on people's screens.
So you got, how many followers, twenty-three thousand or something?
At this point, we're just hovering below twenty-one thousand, so at the end of the fiscal year, I think we're right around twenty thousand.
So if one of those members shows up in their Facebook and then just it just keeps going to anybody.
All those times that those posts appear again, counts as an impression.
I thought it was amazing. A million six hundred.
Thanks. Um, as far as our website, this is always, has always been a hub of information, and this year we saw page view increase by fifteen percent, which brought us to one million twenty-six thousand six hundred page views for the year. Um, and then here are our top pages, so our homepage, of course, followed by Find Your Wild in second, uh, followed by Glacial Park, The Hollows, and Camping, rounding out those top five pages. And then the marketing team also organizes our Find Your Wild program. Um, so this past year, we saw over one thousand four hundred participants, over fifty-eight hundred site check-ins. Uh, we got almost twelve thousand photo submissions and over sixty-four hundred trivia, trivia questions answered. Uh, so this program has achieved excellent participation, and we've won several awards for it. And the best part is the participant test, participant testimonials, excuse me, um, of the memories they made along the way and the sites they didn't even know about, so they were part of this program. So speaking of awards. This past year, the marketing team won two I P R A showcase second place awards, one for written content and the other for website. Um, we also won I P R A F P C section outstanding program award for Find Your Wild. And then also for Find Your Wild, we won the Advancing Trails Award for Trail Promotion and Education um from American Trails, which is an international organization. That's us there, our current team claiming that award earlier this year. And then another main function of the marketing team is to support and collaborate with other teams. So this past year, we designed multiple camp t-shirts, you can see on the pictures there, as well staff and volunteer t-shirts. Um, we created flyers, signage, designs, collaborated on events to provide marketing deliverables, promo items, and help with tabling. Uh, we designed and fulfilled promotional items as needed, um, and supported the foundation. Um, and speaking of marketing, education team strengthening their collaboration, I will pass it on to Heather.
Maddie, uh, nice to see many of you again, nice to meet you Heather, uh, my name is Heather. And I am the Education Service Manager here at the district, and I have the pleasure of sharing some achievements and successes for the Education Department in this past fiscal year. And so first, I wanted to introduce you to the Education Department. Uh, we have five uh full-time coordinators who um design and facilitate engaging um programs for the public across the district and across the county. We have an administrative assistant um who helps with support services for our team and other teams within the district, but who is also the welcoming face at Prairie View Education Center for when public um join us. And we have four part-time information desk specialists um located at Lost Valley Visitor Center um who not only greet visitors at the visitor center, um, but they also field all the incoming calls the district receives um from the public. And so our purpose in education is really grounded in the main root systems of the district. Uh, we provide educational experiences, inspiring audiences to appreciate and preserve um the natural spaces and environment around us. And we do so in meaningful and memorable connections and exciting uh recreational activities. And these activities are available for audiences of all ages um and groups, and they take place in various locations across the district and county, um, whether that be on land, on water, indoors, and more importantly, outdoors. Uh, nature really is our playscape, um, where learning comes alive here, there, and everywhere across the district. And then looking at fiscal year twenty twenty-five, just wanted to highlight some of those numbers. And so we've been very fortunate and had the opportunity to engage through close to twenty-one thousand um people, and that's our schools, um, our youth and family, our adults, our uh mixed groups, um, our community organizations and more. But before I dig into those numbers just a little, I wanted to point out the chart you are seeing on the right, uh, which illustrates our progress in restoring our pre-pandemic attendance levels that we saw. No surprise of that dip in twenty twenty-one, um, but very excited and happy to report that year-over-year progress that we're seeing um to return to those numbers that we've seen. So digging into some of those twenty-one thousand um people that we engaged with, noting some of our school audience, we saw over eighty-six hundred students and teachers in our school outreach programs, which is bringing the district to the school. And then our school field studies, which is taking the schools to our districts, uh, to the district. Um, the McHenry, when we look at the McHenry County Public School District, seventy-two percent of those districts participated, uh, had a school, um, at least one school in each of those districts, um, participating in a school program with us, often for um schools within that district. And then when we think about large groups, um, like school groups, we also have um on the next slide, um, our special events, which also brings larger groups to our sites. Um, we have these throughout the year, uh, these are just three highlights. So kind of starting in the fiscal year, the Earth Day celebration kicks us off in April. Um, in September, we have Great Outdoors Beer Trail, where last year we saw over a thousand um adults um enjoying the trails of El Pro um and the Great Outdoors um with their friends. And then in March, we kind of round out the fiscal year with Festival of the Sugar Maples. In this past one, we uh welcomed about two thousand um individuals to Coral Woods, and that's despite some extreme weather events that we had, um, that kind of deterred um some of those days. So not only we have the larger kind of group events, we also have calendared public programming throughout the year. In this past fiscal year, we had about two hundred of those servicing twenty-four, over twenty-four hundred people in those programs. Um, I just wanted to point out, um, one of our popular um public programs during the summer, which we're actually experiencing right now. Um, but last fiscal year, we had nineteen sessions of summer camps um offered um with four hundred and fifty campers joining us. So um, looking to forward to how this season goes, um, and in addition to that. Um, not only do we have public programs, we also um honor special requests and community um programs um for our community organizations. And this could be attending local fairs, tabling at events, um, or hosting customized activities for groups. And so with those programs, we saw over five thousand people, um, in addition to those public programs and the events and school groups. And then at our visitor centers and our education center, we saw over um, just about a hundred, eight thousand visitors um last fiscal year. And then um, in addition to all these programs and within all these programs, the team supported um with that public messaging around proposition, as as Caitlin mentioned before. So hopefully those numbers are testament to the impact the district has with our public. But I'm gonna leave you with the faces and the scenes of investigation and discovery and curiosity that hopefully um shows that impact a little bit more. And so we're really excited about where we're trending right now with this fiscal year. And so hopefully this time next year, we can talk about how we built on the successes from last year um and having another great uh fiscal year. So do you guys have any questions for off then?
Very impressive, oh, great, very impressive, Heather.
Yes, um, thank you for that, that's so, some really impressive stats. Um, Heather, what are the grades that we target for the partnering with school districts and counties?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our programming right now is really geared toward that kindergarten through eighth grade, where we see probably that elementary, that elementary grade range um the most, but we do have some middle school and some of the younger preschools. We occasionally have some high schools, and we're working right now on some advanced programming um to welcome more of that um grade level to um our sites or schools.
Yeah, I think I saw that in the report, the high school is only two percent.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But there's good opportunity there.
Yeah, exactly, so that's in the uh, the uh, Marketing and Education Plan too, as a goal, um, and the area of opportunity for increasing audiences.
Well, on behalf of the whole board, great, great report. And and just the kind of, you know, the very beginning, you talked about all the vacancies and all the changes, and I'll tell you, from our perspective, the department did miss a beat. And on top of it, doing a great job, so kudos. All right. Business? Regular meeting agenda items, so please, if we've had a chance to take a look at the July twenty-second agenda. Are there any items that uh anyone wishes to have removed? Questions about the items?
No, this is, I mean, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but I was reading about the um um, what Officer Gray had sent us about the rights, how they're trying to educate, maybe have limits on the trails. Uh, so I don't know if anyone else would be interested, I would be interested directly. Elizabeth, I thought he said he'd be willing to come in and talk to the board.
Absolutely, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you had, they were on top of it, very proactive.
Yeah.
Appreciate John's leadership and Chief Stewart's, just to make sure that that everyone's aware and uh education is going on with the other uh units of government, law enforcement, et cetera, just to to do that. But yeah, we can schedule that.
Thank you.
It was um, not uh, not taking objection to the item on the agenda. Just had some questions about the wetland mitigation, so is that something we should address today, or is that something?
Well, we're gonna discuss that, so we do have a slide for that.
Okay.
Um, so we'll come back, or I can fast forward ahead if we want to do that, and then of course, the health insurance, we've got pulled out because we want to go through that in specific details. Um. And I'm just trying to think of, as I'm looking through here, of the items that we have identified. Uh, most things, I think, because the mitigation banking of selling of credits, that's key. Um, just for new board member Heather, when we formally go through the process of requesting authorization to bid, try to get bids out the door with order that it's identified, but if it doesn't happen, we authorize the bid as a communication tool. So that's why you see a realization on the bidding. So that's under the Prairie Stair, Prairie Education Center stairs project. Um, and uh, so yeah, let's go ahead and, Abe, um, why don't you go through the wetland, please?
So, this is just kind of a real high-level quick overview of wetland mitigation. Just kind of throw some questions on the process and answer any question of what the district giving up associated with wetland mitigation. So that, uh, what is the wetland? I think we could all name wetlands, but it does have a legal definition, also has uh legal parameters for identifying wetlands that was created in nineteen eighty-seven federal government, and the big thing, uh, if you're talking about wetlands, is three components to a wetland, and that's the soil, hydrology, and the vegetation, but that is the legal definition. Right there, if we do a wetland determination, we're gonna make sure that that community has those three parameters to meet criteria of wetland mitigation. So the wetlands in the United States are protected based on their um designation. So the federal government has designated federal wetlands or waters in the United States, and the scope of that definition has changed over time, but primarily is associated with the abrogability of interstate water. So if it's connected to the interstate water, it would be a federal wetland. And if it's not deemed a federal wetland, that jurisdiction is determined by the federal government, then it would be a isolated wetland or not a federal wetland, it's a couple of different terms people use. In McHenry County, all wetlands are protected, if they're not a federal wetland, they're protected by the stormwater. So the state of Illinois does not protect wetlands, towns, and McHenry County is protected through stormwater rates. And other states have protected wetlands, uh, some states have different wetland determination criteria, but for our state, in McHenry County, we use the federal definition of wetland, and then the federal government determines whether it's a jurisdictional wetland or a isolated um federal wetland. So wetland mitigation in general is to make sure that there's no net loss of wetlands over time. So if there's an impact to a wetland, then mitigation or compensation to that wetland needs to occur, and that's through a variety of different federal or non-federal rules. In McHenry County, if there's an impact to a non-federal wetland, they'll still utilize some of the federal system, specific federal mitigation base for compensating for some of those losses. I'm not gonna do a huge deep dive on that today, but if there are questions about that, we can have a clear. Excellent. So the different types of wetland mitigation that are available, and the district has been involved in, are fee in lieu, and so fee in lieu is gonna be a situation where there's an impact, usually it's a smaller type impact, and onsite mitigation doesn't work, and there may not be available credits through a bank. So the county, in case the county will accept funds fee in lieu of actual mitigation. And then once that fund gets to a certain level, then they'll ask for proposals to do a wetland mitigation. So, once the funds get up to a level, you actually have a high-quality project, then they'll send out requests for proposals to some type of compensatory wetland creation restoration, so that nature. Uh, all, all permitting goes through this top line, which is first avoidance, you want to make sure that you try and avoid the wetland impact. If you can't avoid the wetland impact, then minimization is the next step. And then lastly would be that that mitigation. So that's just kind of how the permitting works. Um, the second one there is permitting responsible, second one there is permitting responsible. So that is the district would join with a individual permittee and do mitigation based on a specific impact. Some of the permitting responsible programs that we've done have been with Henry County Department of Transportation, and also Alford that sort of large development here, Harrison and Mall. Uh, some of the ones that you may be aware of, Kishawaki Quarter to our French and Olden Gap, were all very responsible mitigations where did mitigation on behalf of individual permitting. And the last one is what we're talking about tonight, that's the mitigating bank. So the district created a bank where we can sell those credits to the public based on their need. So we do, these are all mitigation, vast impact, the last one of these, if there's a violation, so that's mitigation post-impact, but all the ones that we're talking about are pre-impact mitigating, so you don't have that one. Or I advanced, is there any questions on that, that's kind of.
The funds that are being proposed, they, will those go to the county then, or will they come to the district?
The revenues?
Yeah.
To the district. So, there's, there's two different purchases, credit purchases, proposed uh for the board. One is through a private entity business, and the other is through Henry Division of Transportation. So Henry Division of Transportation will be impacting wetlands associated with airport projects, and they require mitigation for those impacts, so they're purchasing those wetland credits from.
We can use those funds then to rehab, restore, create wetlands, stop set.
Well, before that, we have to use those funds for meeting all the performance standards associated with those projects, because they're very high standards, and it takes a lot of effort, a lot of resources to not only manage them to get to that performance, but we're responsible for managing it. So it's a much higher level of object, the whole management maintenance than just our other restorations, sliding. Help this last one. So the question was, what are we giving up? Uh, other than giving up, I think of the opportunity costs associated with our resources are driven towards these mitigation projects. So when we have a mitigation project, it's at a minimum five years investment on managing that, getting up to a performance level uh needed before sign-off, in some cases it does go over, but every time we go into one of these mitigations, it is a long-term not only to get to that performance standard, but forever, we have to manage them. And then these are deed restrictions, actual restrictions associated with mitigation. So first of all, I just kind of explained, we have to manage it forever for that equal quality, and that's, that's the level of being hit. And then you can read through these, we can't destroy or alter based on what the project goal was. So once you meet that performance, it needs to be maintained at that level. We can't uh do any construction or placement of structures out on that deed restricted area. We can't, this is about chemical to biological properties, angry livestock, no damage to any vegetation for any of those high avenues, and no operation of vehicles other than those needed for management. So we can use pesticides for management purposes, we can drive vehicles, ATVs for burning, and follow-up based on species management, but we can't just go and restrict, for example.
And the, the land that's being impacted by these projects, it's not district.
No.
Yeah, so it's their project and funds going here.
In most cases, there have been times where internally we would need mitigation for unavoidable impact, but all these are external.
Okay.
Example of that is like a trail project that we're putting in that happens to touch a wetland, uh, you know, because we have twenty-five feet to get a trail in, uh, we have worked with um land preservation after resources to mitigate whatever impact that might have had.
And where the pipeline's coming. And where the pipeline's coming, there will be wetland impact. As a part of the project that will be.
That's different.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
The private developer, what is he?
The development project, the stream factor or whatever. So that project is being regulated through the Army Corps, it was an Army Corps project. And we don't really get involved in what's happening because that they have a project manager.
You need to find the credit because it's going to be bad.
We look it up. If it didn't inform summary what the actual development impact is.
I just don't. I was trying to get in my mind, how similar is it to the timber credits? To the timber credits, to the.
How large?
Yeah.
Of carbon. Boy, that's a great question. So first off, the carbon credits are voluntary. So there's not a regulated market for carbon, state regulations, carbon trading at this point in time, all voluntary. This is a regulatory market. So wetlands aren't protected. I mentioned that federal state and local level, variety of different protections. But carbon currently is not regulated in the United States. So that's the first major one. Obviously, the product is different, the ecosystem services are different. We're talking about sequestering carbon versus wetland impact. So community versus individual component. I firmly believe that you're going to see more of these market-driven ecological service trading, market-based trading happening in the future.
Thanks, Dave. Any other questions?
The previous slide, can you say what GLP was?
Sorry, Glacial Park.
Glacial Park, okay. Thank you. So those acronyms were all sites.
So Kishawaki Corridor.
Yeah.
Was KWC, all in KWC.
Thanks, Dave.
Our friend.
I think, okay.
All right, so the agenda stands. Health insurance renewals?
Right, well, we are going to have Andy and Jenny go through this. It's that time of year to review our insurance renewals. And we shifted in versus going to the market and ignoring this cooperative pool. So anyone who's through here?
This is sort of the first one stated at the initial ITC rate, they show a PPO of 16%. A GPO of 7% across the whole country, 10% increase. So obviously, these are ways to try and mitigate that now. Whether it causes all the, just the use of jail is what we're possible. A year ago, 12 months, you were spending 90%. IDC is totally out of the study plan. Trees 12 months and a day. So a couple of things, the main thing we did, we put in a, call it a narrow network. So basically, you have the inlet network, out of network, and now we have this narrow network. And if you stay in a narrow network, it changes all the stays there today. If you're outside of it, nothing to love. The good news is we did impact, we conceded, it looked like almost 90% of the boy's curve matters are in that narrow network. So if they stay with that, there's no effect changed. By doing that, we reduced it to 6% instead of 10%. And then, if you look at the cost summary, the total proposed rate increase, assuming that none of the players change, it's all the same opponent, like isolate and see what the cost of justice changes. They have to. So 10.7% increase, it was changed. Another thing I should say, take all of Jenny's information away from sales. We did change the GLP one, offered a couple of ways to reduce costs. One was to liberate us all together. There's a big saying, "There was some of the, so it's about 3%." They would have a significant, obviously, people in the district would use it. So we opened a modern approach, which basically banfathers the current users into it. Anybody who wants a chill, it's a chill cost. There have to be some certain requirements, EMI requirements, have to participate, island health assessment. They're encouraged to lose everything activity, cost things like that, have to insure. And that reduced our cost by half percent, other than how did it go up? Matter of fact, it's all of that's a possibility. Back to the total of that cost, showing just the raise was 10% percent, $17,000. But if you look at all the enrolled, the actual credit sponsorships, the day 31st, that was the most.
Sitting.
With, then you project that with these new rates, that 10.7% increase. Look at our budget, 26 to 27, it's only about a 6.3% increase. Because we had more people, we had new employees come on, they have children and the other dependents. There's also seven people away, benefits insurance, and obviously, that's an impact. So that's the year, less than 7%. The other good news we haven't talked about is last year, we didn't find ourselves recently. We got a dividend back from IDC. So we first joined IDC in 2021, they had a history of giving on the PPO, a 3% annual dividend. On the age of almost five and a half, they haven't done that in recent years, it's been much lost. This is the first year we've got a significant, it's 14 grand, represent about 1.5% of total chips cost. So that's size, that's the district's money, it sits in a fund with them. Reach a certain level, we couldn't pull that out of the user if we wanted to. If you don't know what that level is, it's probably 50 or $60,000, it's only about 19%. But if we leave the IDC at any time, that's on. So if you factor that in, it reduces that cost in 10% or 5% year over year.
What question on the GLPs, since that's such a big cost component? Other, it's not generics, there's some, because there's such a demand for those, there's the secondary market. These contractors can make, which are significant at least. Does the plan allow for that or is it random?
I think everything we discussed is a brand old. I can probably see if you're trying, trying to. So I know you can.
Right. Well, if only for a certain amount of time until the others ramp up, go over and all that. And then those other guys lose the license section. But if right now, it's a significant cost. Are you running into any?
Yeah, I guess where my thoughts went late was I commend the group for incorporating their behavioral mod. I sell changes into the design with that follow up. So it's both, not only the drug, but behavioral changes, so it's encouraging.
What would the GLP ones?
I was just gonna say for the GLP changes that I'm looking at, it only affect a little bit of cost. We put those on since too. So and then with the HSA plan, for the, for like the last three years, IRS changed the amounts on us, those are predictable. So let's go. That plan is, well, that plan has seen changes for the last few years, so we just, we think the plan. That's, that one was out of our control, but I don't know.
Yeah, demographics, what we found, I'm going to get back to your question. Is that the younger demographic dependency higher?
Eventually, I mean, ADS end of employees are there, that's economics, they, people figured it out, and that is a good way to go.
We have about 30% of employees in the HSA, second to all.
Yeah.
Well, one thing about the GLPs is, long run, it may actually save money. That's the one thought is, because it's having such an impact on cardiac, ID, some, the other. Well, play that money, it's almost an investment. What's, I read to it, but I can't remember. What's the impact to the employee? Our cost is 6.7% overall, PPO. Well, I can't remember what it was for.
It's in the details, it depends on the plan, but some of them are. So if you look at the total annual cost for, it goes up $1,100 in current. Well, that's our total cost sharing. So individual goes up 35 on the HSA, for a family goes up $1,000. Go to the PPO, total annual cost increases 35, visual and $188.
Overall, the cost increases seem to be in line. I mean, health, healthcare inflation's been, you know, 8% pretty much every year, one year just a little bit more, a little bit less. I think when last year, we were below that, and this year, we're going to be above it. So I'm fine with any objections to the proposal.
The other thing we have, I mean, we'll have the representatives out in our all staff meeting in September. So staff will have opportunity to take a look at this and make decisions that us or their families. Proposed contributions of employee cost sharing, the percentages left the same. Like, there's been no recommended increases. Obviously, the amount of the cost increases, but we're not increasing the percentage share. So that is our proposal at this point. Obviously, this goes back to IDC, we'll be there final.
And when's the open enrollment?
It'll be the beginning of November.
At the end of the year?
November, so that I.
All right, very good.
It's gonna be on your consent agenda, and we appreciate that. I appreciate Andy and Jenny working through this and doing some research on this and bringing this back. It's been, it's proven to be very effective for us to be part of cooperative on this.
The bigger, the bigger the pool, the lesser the risk, yes? All right. Executive Director, report.
Okay, a few things. What you also have in your packet for any questions is it is our quarterly first quarter update. So you've got a strategic plan, dashboard of numbers, you've got our capital projects. And of course, we're just starting the fiscal year, so things are just getting started. So it's early on in the process. So any questions you have, you follow or ask on that front. A reminder, we do have the Foundation's Joint Board Meeting on August 2nd from 9:30 at the Alden, Blue Farm in Alden, Harvard area. And so looking forward to that, that agenda out and all the details. And that should be a good time to connect with the Foundation Board. I did see they had a push out for pollinators, they were trying kind of a new push. And they had some matching with that. So they are trying some very creative things. They're also working on a raffle, Great Outdoor Beer Trail, Cash Raffle. Simon, I have to thank those, Heather for suggesting that, and Shana as a new approach. It's to make some additional money for the work that they have gone on. I do want to highlight two things. And we talked at the staff meeting, we've kind of gone through this thing of victories, opportunities, and challenges. It is kind of a way to go through the district and look at focus and how we collaborate. But a success story that came out of our natural resources team was Cindy Jawlansky, our wildlife ecologist, wildlife ecologist, was the bats at the Glacial Park. And unfortunately, the news for over a decade, they've been on decline, the brown bats and the white coat syndrome. And they were out just recently, this past week. And a success story here of an increase of 80% increase. And that was a what they could counted, what they could count. So again, great job there, we recently too. So we were kind of saying we did the abatement, the investment that was there on the bat farm. But obviously, putting the roof and ensuring that that stays its habitat right now. And we're seeing that success story. So that's one success story. The other victory was the great work by our planning team, working with ComEd and Land Administration and Natural Resources and Operations, was for them to come out and try to restrict protect. So when they're flying patterns, I mean, they love to take those utility lines down. But until that happens, that's protecting highways of bird species there. So you would see, Dave, you had reported driving in, it was sandhill cranes, right, that we're able to?
It's pretty amazing, one straight line and then just went straight vertical. I've never seen a wild.
So it's good to have, have those type of victory stories taking place. And then I did send out information on, and thank you. There's a lot of always opportunities to get involved. So we had a request from the McHenry County Historical Society by particular subcommittee of their group to visit the Kennedy Home, speaking with Vice President Everard. Now, can you give me the correspondence back to the director of the Historical Society, saying that we'd entertain a site visit with a small group? And so, once we have that date locked in, we'll look, some trustees that want to come over and take a look at that property. Again, that would be something we're doing. We also requested the WA McConnell Foundation on the same day that we're doing border tree. They're doing wine stroll, and they would like to access the McConnell property across the road. So again, we came with them, we're going to allow that to happen as well from the outside. And we'll kind of just walk through. And trustee Zeller has already volunteered to be there. I know trustee Leahy is considering, we're going to represent him, I will be there as well.
And that the same day, August 2nd?
Same day, it's a long day. It's there, but I think it's informed that we have a presence. And so that just kind of helps build, we've got those two sites opening. The, what's there? There was the McHenry County Chronicle with Landmarks Illinois. Thank you, trustee Zeller, for bringing this in. So a lot of, lot of socialization on the protection of those spaces. And then the last thing I will say, and just kudos to John and the executive team and planning and Shana, Amy and Shana for working through our Q process of qualification of firms. You have read about that, we have seven firms, very solid firms, competitive proposals, no fees attached yet, but just the qualifications, they're down to four. And proposals will go out, thank you, trustee Leahy will be on that interview team. And we'll determine from when those come back in August, which ones will actually be invited for an interview. And then onward, so in September, you should have a recommendation. So that process is moving. And again, thank John for the way it's working very well, kind of the team approach collaboration here. It's a really exciting project in time. So more requests to come, I'm sure, with the needs and wants and wishes, but the process will lead us through.
Great news on the bats. And Abe, I'm not sure, I think Abe or somebody on your staff has sent me the article about all the mitigation things that they're trying to do to get that whitenered, fungus out of there. So the fans and some low tech ways, but anything that works. And maybe this is the assignment at the beginning.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Just a quick question on the hike with Mike, you were going to meet where?
So hike with Mike is on Saturday, it's at Glacial Park. Chairman Buehler will not be in attendance this Saturday. However, our board liaison, county board member Thomas is taking the hike lead. And Chief Stewart will be there. So, yeah, and happy to hike the claim, claims, it's a great hike.
Yeah, it's going to be at the Lost Valley.
They will not start at the Lost Valley Visitor Center. They've normally gone to the parking lot, she, enough of Arts Road to the left, the parking lot, or.
You're actually turning at the lower parking lot. Lost Valley's lower parking lot, so we hear the police.
So drive all the way in, lower Art Pete.
Yeah, so the Lost Valley parking lot, you can park in either one, but it's the lower part of the country.
Thank you.
Is it weather? Outstorm.
Well, that's a good call. I guess in the morning, we'll make a determination of whether it's a go or no go. I can assure you, while you were at Lake of the Hills, so the weather was hot, staff was prepared for things that agreed to happen. So yeah, if there's a limit of severity, we'll, you know, want to check in or text or whatever.
Elizabeth keeps it fast pace.
That's right. All right, public comments, are you anybody online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, thank you. Well, we entered Germany, I just saw something in the news I wanted to mention. There was some invention in France worth watching. Apparently, there's a trial area where instead of a windmill, great electricity, it's just a vertical, like a cone. Inside it is material that vibrates with the wind. And that vibration, it's the same crazy electromagnetic electricity. So, yeah, I just saw it in the Wall Street Journal this week, so it's brand new, but fingers crossed. So that's brand new, but fingers crossed.
What's the size of the structure?
Oh, they're not nearly as tall as the windmills, but the point is they're just a cone. They're like a twelve inches across. And they're just a cone. And there's a substrate inside that the wind just, just vibrates. And yeah, so I'll see if I can find the article and send her on. It's, it's close. It'd be wonderful. Alright, any other comments before we go to Germany? In emotion to a truck. Second, by Ron.
F C Deller, yes. F C Deller.
Yes.
Secretary of Author.
Yes.
F C Brady, yes. F C Lady.
Yes.
And President Frithim Ever.
Yes.